Good evening. My name is Ben Maene, and I would like to like to call this meeting to order. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting for the town of Monroe. And today is September 2nd, 2025, and it's approximately 7:11 PM. I will take a roll call of all the members of the commission, including myself, Ben Maene, acting chair. Now let the others introduce themselves for the record.
Sarah Harris, member.
Ron Stomack, member.
Brendan Liberati, alternate board member.
Margaret Lee, alternate board member.
Great, thank you. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, public law, or Public Act 21-1. As such, the meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, which we are all attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless you're speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state his or her name and title at the outset to each occasion that person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat feature will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I will ask the applicants to keep their presentation as concise as possible. The commission will then take review. The commission will then review town staff and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the chair or to commission. After all comments pro, in opposition, or in a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments and questions direct, or a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new material is entered in as evidence or testimony during the response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to ZBA-related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow in a similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting files are published agenda unless otherwise amended. So for the agenda for tonight, we have two cases or two hearings. And we will start with those. And I think Kathleen, you said we're not going to be doing the election of officers. So I think we could start with the hearings. So if we can hear the first, we can, if you can read off the first applicant.
Yep. So we're going to start with VBA 2025-02, file number 1432, 24 Braylock Way, application for proposed variance. I am going to read the notice of public hearing in accordance with the Connecticut General Statutes, Section 88-7D. A public hearing will be held on September 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter. Fully remote Zoom meeting concerning the following, ZBA 2025-02, file number 1432, 24 Braylock Way, application for proposed variance of section 3.17 to permit 17.1% property coverage in lieu of the required maximum property coverage of 15% for a deck extension located at 24 Braylock Way. It was published in the CT Post Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, and Tuesday, August 26th, 2025. I promoted Mary to a panelist, but I don't think she accepted it, so I'm going to do it one more time. Beautiful. Mary, that should give you the ability to speak and share your screen. I'm going to stop sharing my screen.
I do want to make a comment about this case.
Yes.
So my, I am a neighbor of this particular property, and I do believe that I can act independent and to the you know, to the rules of the regulations in regards to this case. But if someone has any objection to that, you know, I just want to make it clear. I could not, I, I could step away and remove myself for the vote voting process. If there's no issues, I will participate.
Does anybody have any issues from the board?
This is Margaret Lee, alternate. I'm a little concerned because if there's a roll call vote on this, then his name would be attached to a vote yes or no, which I feel could possibly impact his relationship with his neighbor.
That's at his discretion. So when it comes to people, oh, so first off, we do need to see, we didn't technically see. We didn't actually seat two people. So we are missing Christina McPhail tonight. Brendan Liberati is going to be seated for her, and Margaret Lee is going to be seated for James Went tonight. So we did miss that. So I am going to make sure that's on the record. It's at his discretion if he wants to recuse it, if he feels he can be objective. He's disclosing what the potential conflict of interest could be. That's at his discretion if, you know, he feels like it would impact his vote, you know, to the neighbors or not. I do understand your concern. I think it's more of if somebody has a concern about him being objective or not, not necessarily his future relationship with a neighbor or not.
Well, his objectivity could be impacted by his concerns about his neighbor's relationship with him. That's my concern.
So Ben, do you want to speak on that at all? Staff does not tell you if you should or should not recuse yourself. That is at the discretion of each individual.
I, I don't have a problem with it, but it, you know, again, if the other board members do, you know, this is the time to speak up. I just wanted to make it clear. I wanted to be on the record because I am, my property is right next door to it, or right across the street from it. And I got, you know, I did get a notification in the mail.
This is Ron Stomack. I have no objection to your making your decision as you see fit.
Brendan Liberati, I'm the same with Ron. I don't have any issue with you being a part of this.
Yeah, Sarah Harris, no objection. I mean, your decision could go either way. So I have no objection.
All right, Mary, that means you're up. You, as a panelist, you should have the availability to share your screen and make your presentation.
Okay, thank you. I don't need to share anything to the screen, but had a little issue because this is, I know the Zoom meeting, but I think, can you hear me? Because I was unable to unmute my, well, you unmuted me, but I still wasn't able to unmute. Can you hear me okay, everybody? Yes. Okay. So my name is Maria Suckarack. I go by Mary. I am the homeowner at 24 Braylock Way, Monroe, Connecticut. And I am appealing to the board for a variance due to site coverage. I am, I would like to replace my deteriorating deck and increase it by 140 square feet. Right now, my property is pre-existing non-conforming and legally permitted since the day that this home was built in 1998, which the total site coverage in 1998 was 16.8, and therefore was already over the 15%. With me increasing the deck, replacing the deck and increasing it by 140 square feet is only going to increase the site coverage by 0.3%, which ends up being 17.1. I feel that expanding my deck is not negatively going to impact the neighborhood at all, or the public safety or welfare of the neighborhood or the character of the neighborhood. It does not impinge on any bordering homes or property lines. This is the bare minimum needed to correct the problem of my deck. Like I said, it is already non-conforming in terms of the, but legally permitted for the site coverage. And increasing my deck by 140 square feet is the minimum needed, you know, to provide for a reasonable use of my property.
So I, so typically we do have applicants share, you need to share the drawings so that we can kind of walk the commission through it. I am looking at your digital application, and I apologize because I review the paper file. I don't review the digital file. Staff processed it. I don't even see that your drawing was submitted digitally, so I am going to need that tomorrow, but I don't even have that to share.
Wait, my survey, which, which, which one?
Yeah, the survey.
Oh, I know I stopped in multiple times, and I was under the impression that I had met all the requirements needed.
We have it physically. I physically have it in the file, and the commissioner should all physically have it, but normally at these meetings, the applicant presents it to the commission. Does everybody have a copy of the survey with them?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I thought I emailed the digital copy. I forwarded you the, the digital copy of the survey.
Okay, Kristy, the one that processes all of those items?
Yes, it was sent to me in a PDF, email PDF, and I, and I did forward that, I believe. I know I did. I forwarded all that because you said you need everything digitally.
Yes. Okay, so everybody can see in the back, you can see the proposed deck, and you can see the proposed sunroom. If you look to their bulk zoning table on the left side of the sheet, you can see the very last line. That is their maximum building lot coverage from 15 to 17.1. But as you know, the applicant mentioned, I just want to bring it up that we have verified that what brought them to the 16% coverage was all legally permitted. It was basically the pool that I believe was done in the 90s. So a history of RF1 districts in this town is we have three residential and farming districts, RF1, 1, RF1, 2, RF1, RF2, and RF3, all stand for residential and farming, 1, 2, and 3, 1 acre, 2 acre, and 3 acre lots respectively. At some point in the past, I think it was in the 2000s, the zoning regulations for coverage changed. So originally, it was 15% of the building was the maximum coverage. It changed to 15% of the site was maximum coverage. So you'll get these a lot. We get these a lot where people come in and they have her property now. Everything is permitted and was in compliance with the zoning regulations at the time that they got the permit, including the pool in the back, the house, the deck, the driveway. When the zoning regulations change, it made her lot pre-existing non-conforming. So that 16% that she's increasing it from, that's pre-existing non-conforming. That's a legal coverage. So her increase of coverage, she's asking beyond that. She's not going from 15 to 17.1. She's going from the, what was it, 16.8% to the 17.1%. And I believe in here you had given that total square footage, and I apologize if you had said it, but I would. I put it again. What's your total square footage you're requesting the increase for?
40. Yes, the total square footage, it was I'm trying to think.
No, the
It was 70, it was the square feet for, was initially, the current square footage is 7,631, and it will increase to 7,771 square feet. I'm increasing it by 140 square feet, and that's why it goes up to 17.1 versus 16.8 for the
I just want to make it clear, the ask isn't to go from 15 to 17.1. The ask isn't to increase it 2.1%. The ask is to go from 16.8% to 17.1%, which is 140 square feet. And I just want to make that clarification for the board.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions from the board member to the applicant?
Margaret Lee, alternate. My question is, you had mentioned a safety issue of getting from the deck to the pool. However, the, it seems that there's been no problem accessing the pool from the deck until you, until, to this point. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. A second question. Does the sunroom currently exist, or is this a part of the addition?
It's part of the addition.
Thank you.
I have a question that I think might be more directed toward Kathleen. So Kathleen, can you explain what the spirit of the 15% coverage rule is? I was under the impression it has to do with drainage. You know, what's, what's the goal of keeping that at 15% or versus going over slightly?
Yeah, no, it's exactly what you're, and I'm sorry, someone has their hand up for the attendees. Uh, oh. Apologies, that might be James. It says it's Mary Went, but I'm assuming. So James, if that's you, I'm promoting you to a panelist. James, is that you?
I am here. I apologize. I thought the meeting started at 7:30.
Nope, no worries. So Ben is currently acting chair, and we have we have two people already seated. Brendan is seated for Christina. Margaret's seated for you. However, it's, I'll take your advice on some of this because we already started as this group. I would encourage us to keep this group for the remainder of the vote. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I, I have no problem with that. I apologize for being tardy, and for some reason, it's not letting me do my video either.
Yeah, that's because we're on a new webinar protocol. Nobody can do their video.
Okay, because yeah, because I can only see you. Is that the same for everybody then?
Yes.
It is.
I apologize. I apologize, folks, for being late to the party, but, but, carry on.
But as panelists, you should be able to mute and unmute yourself. So we're currently on 24 Braylock. So yeah, so our RF1 zone is a 1-acre zone. So when you think about a 1-acre lot, yes, it's enough to build a home, but when you start adding pools and driveways and decks and things of that nature, all the things you mentioned, it increases the impervious surface on site. We also try to maintain it because it's, it's a puzzle piece. So Monroe is an only septic system town. We don't allow sewers. We don't have sewers to connect into. So you have to have enough room on site for your sewer system, for your reserve sewer system, for your stormwater management, you know, and those regulations continue to get more restrictive as it goes forward. So one, this is ensuring that you can fit all those puzzle pieces onto the site, and we're not creating a situation where someone's not going to have enough room for their reserve system if their main septic system fails. Also, it's just about the character of the neighborhood. You know, when you think about having 1-acre lots side by side by side, you know, I think it's 150 feet is our frontage in those areas. Yep, 150 feet are in our RF1 districts. When you think about 150 feet, 150 feet, 150 feet, you know, there is a character we want to aesthetically maintain through the town too, which is just making sure it's not a lot with a bunch of impervious surface, a bunch of impervious surface, concrete jungle, concrete jungle. You know, we do try to keep, you know, a certain amount of character in the town, and one of the ways that they can restrict that in the RF1 districts is by restricting the total site coverage on site. So it has a functional purpose of just making sure we can always fit our puzzle pieces into the site, both now and in the future, and it serves an aesthetic purpose.
Thank you for explaining that. And I mean, we're talking about a deck. So is there is there any sort of feedback from like Public Works or Engineering as far as like how much, you know, less than 1% increase using a deck? It seems as it would have a really small impact as far as
Stormwater requirements would be small. So when we're talking about so when we're talking about impervious coverage, right now, the way our town engineer calculates it is he only requires them to account for the increase of impervious surface because it's not fair to penalize somebody for work that was already permitted properly during that time. So it's not like he's going to retroactively make them account for their stormwater for their house or their pool. So it's just whatever they increase it. So if they really are increasing it like 140 feet, that would mean that they have to account for yeah, 15, yeah, they have, it's a, it's a very minimal amount. They have to do 1.3 inches, you know, over the course of that. So they could accommodate the increase required for the stormwater in like a small rain garden in the, in the rear of the property, and that would be suitable. That would suffice the town engineer. So we're not crocking about like a big underground system or something like that that would be associated with an improvement for this.
All right. Do we have any direct questions for the applicant from the board? Is there any public comment? Is anyone in the public wish to speak on behalf or for or against?
If somebody is here for the public, I just ask that you raise your hand so that I can unmute you. There's one attendee, but that could be the next applicant that may not be here for this application.
So there's none? No public? I think that's just Mary raising her hand.
Yeah. And Mary, you can unmute yourself. You don't need to raise your hand.
Oh, I, I just have, I didn't know if I was able to say one more thing or if I'm allowed to.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I know you explained why the 15%. And I mean, me increasing my duck by 140 square feet is not going to affect the sewer system at all. My husband and I are the only ones that live here. And basically, we've want to rebuild the stack that has been up for the past 25 years, and we thought adding a sunroom would just give us a little bit more use of it and just enjoy some of the time out there. So it isn't going to be any increase in like the sewer system burden or anything like that. And it is definitely still in compliant with the character of our neighborhood and the town. And also, I did speak with several neighbors. They called me when they got the letter. And the ones that contacted me were all in favor of it, and they absolutely had no problem at all because you won't really even see from the road or the, my neighbors, it's not going to affect them at all. So they were all in favor. The ones that contacted me when they got the letter to find out what was going on, they were in favor of me increasing the deck by this very small amount.
Great. So we do have, for the record, we do have the drawings on the screen.
And so you can see the existing septic system that's there. You can see the reserve area that is already designated. And then this is the proposed area of the development and the existing pool. Our town engineer does not require your stormwater to be taken off of the like location where the increase is occurring. So they would have the option to accommodate for the stormwater anywhere else if the front of the lot made more sense or things like that. So it's not restricted to this area. So when we think about the space of those puzzle pieces we were talking about, there's some flexibility with the stormwater.
And I just do want to say, I just didn't show the existing deck now. The existing deck is like an L shape. So that's now it's become a rectangle. So that's basically that's, it's not really that much bigger than what the existing deck is, again, 140 square feet. So we made it more of a rectangle than an L shape.
Great.
May I ask a question, Margaret Lee?
Of course.
Of the applicant. Is the proposed sunroom going to be an additional impervious space, or is that part of the number that you've already given us?
Oh, that's part of the number. The entire deck is not going to be the sunroom, and it's not going to be an open deck. So like, it's going to be more half or three quarters is going to be covered as a sunroom. The rest is going to stay open so I can grill. It's, it's basically, um, that's, it's not, that is the existing, that is the structure it's going to be. Just part of it's going to be enclosed.
And Margaret, what I think is, is difficult, and if you want to give me one moment, I will try to bring up the aerial of what the site looks like now. So when we talk about the increase, the current deck is included in the existing impervious coverage calculation. So part of this area is getting replaced with the proposed deck and the sunroom. So when they talk about the increase, there's already a portion of impervious surface here. And then my understanding is, and Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, they would take down the entire deck, and then they're going to replace it with the sunroom.
Correct, and make it more rectangular. As you see, it's kind of L shape. The stairs are actually going to, I think, actually be almost in the same exactly where your little arrow is there. It's just making it more rectangular. And when you see like my table there, that's going to be the part that's going to be covered. And the other part closer to the chimney is the one that's going to be kept uncovered so I can grill and not have an issue. So that is correct.
So they're not converting the whole thing from grass to this. They're converting it from an already partial deck.
Correct.
What they're proposing.
Correct.
Thank you.
There is no further questions. I think we're ready to close this case, or this hearing. All right, so we will close the hearing on this particular matter for 24 Braylock. And we will move on to the next one.
Oh.
So we don't vote on this right now? We go to the
We're going to vote on both of them after we hear the second case.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So hold on, I have to figure out how to change role to attendee. Okay, so Mary, I'm going to put you back as an attendee. And I am going to promote who I believe is the next applicant to panelist. Beautiful. And then Chairman Maene, you're ready to move on to the next application?
Yes.
Would you like me to start by reading the notice of public hearing?
That'd be great.
So the next application is EBA 2025-03, file number 1433631 Elm Street. In accordance with the Connecticut General Statutes 8-73, a public hearing will be held on September 7th, 20, September 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via fully remote Zoom meeting concerning ZBA 2025-03, 1433631 Elm Street, application for proposed variance of 3.1.5A to permit a 21-foot front yard setback in lieu of the required 50 feet. This was published in the CT Post two times, Tuesday, August 19th, and Tuesday, August 26th.
Okay, do we have the applicant?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So my name is Joe Spinelli, and
Okay. So my name is Joe Spinelli, and um obviously, for the reasons that Kathleen just stated, I'm looking to have a variance of a twenty-one foot front yard setback in lieu of the required fif- fifty feet. I am actually looking to um add an A D U onto the existing property. So my parents can age in place and remain in Monroe where they lived for nearly sixty years and actually worked in the school system. So um i- in gearing up for this, I've hired many experts who looked through the entire property, consulted with the A two survey. I don't know if if should I be putting this stuff on the screen, Kathleen? Does that?
If you have it, you can. If you don't, I do have your application.
I have to send you a request, it looks like. Um.
You got it.
Okay, let's see. This is a little bit different than uh.
I know, it's webinar, it's.
Yeah, this is uh something that I'm not used. I've done plenty of Zoom calls, but this is a little bit different than uh. Can you see the screen now?
No.
You can't. Okay. Okay. Well, I'm having a little bit of trouble, but I was looking to see if I can share the survey and some of the architectural plans.
Um, I have your application. Your application was together in one in one item, so your stuff is easy to find.
Okay. Um, yeah, so that is it. So basically, what I've been done doing is I've hired many experts who looked through the entire property, consulted with the A two survey, which you guys do have. And we've concluded that for many reasons, the best place for the A D U would be to the left side of the house set a little bit further back. Now, the hardship I'm hardship that I'm going up against right now is that the existing property is already non-conforming. And the proposed placement of the A D U wouldn't increase the non-conformity. It would in fact be a little bit even less non-conforming than the already existing property. So taking into consideration not to increase non-conformity anymore, this location was also most suitable aesthetically and structurally compared, you know, uh from what the experts have told me. So this way, the home could be mirrored to the right side of the home, matching the roof lines and the overall flow of the house. By placing the A D U into the allowed setback, the professionals that I've consulted said that they determined that it would be structurally and aesthetically pru- prudent to not have it back there because it would be grossly out of place, and it wouldn't be able to match the overall line of the house. The way we have as far as, and I actually, I wish I could share some of the um some of the designs that he showed as well as some of the uh, but I I believe you all have that. I I gave you some of the uh images and the renderings, right, Kathleen?
Yeah, I can.
But what we've concluded is, you know, we've taken in deep consideration the town's requirements, but also to keep the property looking good for the town of Monroe, and also what is best suited for the needs of um of our family. And the goal is 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 so my parents could just age in place. And for my own personal mental well-being is to provide one level living for them where they've, you know, where they're accustomed to living. So not having to worry about stairs and everything else. And that was the whole process of the design that we came up with.
So I'll just add in the same capacity as the previous application, the front yard setback is pre-existing non-conforming due to the location of the house on the property. So they are eighteen point six feet from their front property line in their most constrained. All of that um they had legal permits for when the house was built. They are proposing to do the one-story addition on this side. And again, they're not even aligning with the front. They're actually coming back a little bit. They are in compliance with their coverage calculations um as well as their other setbacks for the property. Um. And they have gone through the accessory dwelling unit application um and requirements with town staff. And what they are proposing does meet um the accessory dwelling unit requirements.
Okay. Is there more or is that um your entire presentation?
That's all I have.
Okay. Any um, so I'll open it to the board. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, this is Margaret Lee. I was a little confused looking at the um sightline and everything that was said. Um. It looked, it looks as though judging, what, where are you actually building this out? Are you building it out towards West uh West Elm or or West Maiden? Or are you building it out towards Elm Street?
It's not going towards Elm Street. It's just going parallel to the existing structure. So it's it's not going towards the street any further.
Uh huh.
It's just going parallel to the existing structure.
The.
So as I look, so it's not West Maiden. West Maiden is the complete other side. It's 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 not going towards any other street.
All right. So so West Maiden is on the o- opposite side of the house from your addition.
Correct.
As I look at your house on from Elm Street is on the left.
Correct.
Going closer to the other side. I get it. Okay.
Yep. Uh huh.
Um. What does this do in terms of impervious, since we were talking about impervious space anyway? What does this do in terms of um uh increasing the impervious space beyond, if at all, the um required amount? Fifteen.
So they're they're not asking for a coverage variance. They're only asking for a front setback. So they meet the coverage requirement. So they're I think around fourteen percent. They're under the fifteen. They'll account for the stormwater for the increase of impervious surface. He's already talked to our town engineer. Um, he has come in and had thorough conversations with every member of staff, um, including the health department, um, planning and zoning, the town engineer, making sure that he can accommodate for all those requirements. So his only request is for the front yard setback. He's in compliance with all the other planning and zoning regulations.
And the current, just to review, the current yeah, front yard setback is what?
Fifty feet.
But I mean, what is is that? Uh, what is his house that uh?
His house is eighteen point six.
I'm sorry?
His house is eighteen point six.
And that was what had been approved prior to the new regs?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the addition is going to be thirty-one. Is that right? Am I reading that correctly?
Uh, at the most furthest corner, um, it's twenty-three and twenty-two in these locations. So he he's asking for twenty-one. Um, because I advise them to make sure that, you know, they have conceptual drawings with the architect. Um, so if for some reason the architect says, uh, you know, the board for this or the siding for this or the wall for this needs to come out another six inches because of this material change, I don't want them to get stuck because it's a plus or minus kind of situation that they get from the surveyor because it's still in a little bit of a conceptual stage. So his request is asking for a relief to twenty-one feet.
Gotcha.
So the just, so the cur- so the building currently is how many?
Eighteen point six feet.
Eighteen point six.
At its most restrictive location.
So that sounds like a reduction of the setback.
Well, i- anything he would build new has to meet the fifty-foot requirement. And
It does.
And the entire house is in fifty feet. So this is his fifty-foot setback line.
Yeah, I saw that.
The entire house is in the fifty feet. So if he does anything except for maybe doing an addition off of this one small space in the back.
Back, yeah.
You'd have to ask for variance.
Uh huh.
Can you bring up the photo of the house, how it looks right now?
Yes.
So it's basically going to the left there where the shed is.
Uh huh.
And Kathleen, I I wasn't able to show the rendering of what it would look like uh completed. I don't know if you have access to to that. Or some, not allowed to share.
I had showed uh these.
Yeah, so those are the renderings of.
Yeah, we have those in the packet.
Okay.
So it's this addition to the left.
Any other questions for the uh applicant?
Um, Brendan Liberati, um, I was curious what the foundation remain, the Remains Foundation was in the back. Um, and I guess if it's buildable, why did you choose the location, the pros- proposed addition where you have it as opposed to back there?
What foundation are you referring to?
Um, looking at the survey.
Uh huh.
Um, on the top left, it says Remains Foundation.
Yeah, that was where a barn used to be. Uh, I way before that uh they were ever uh in in at this property. Um, number one, that's it's not buildable. And number two is it's, you know, part of the, part of um where the addition is going to go is for me to have access to be a caretaker as they age in place in town. And um that wouldn't be feasible at that location. That's basically where a shed would go.
And number three, you can't have a detached accessory dwelling unit in a R F one residential zone. So if they wanted to use it for an accessory dwelling unit, we only allow detached structures in R F three zones. So they wouldn't be able planning and zoning wouldn't allow them to move forward in that way.
Great, thanks, Kathleen.
Any feedback from the neighbors?
Are you are you asking me or are you asking uh?
Yes, I'm asking the applicant, sorry.
No, I actually, we uh neighbors have been favorable to it. Um, the house next door is vacant right now, and uh the the neighbors in the back are um, they they're all in favor for it. Good, basically, they don't want my parents to have to move. So I think they they would rather see the addition, but they're they're all in favor.
Margaret Lee, um, so exactly how much additional uh setback is being taken up by this in terms of feet from the fifty, the fifty-foot setback originally?
I'm I'm not sure.
Being added here?
I'm not sure I quite understand.
Okay, you got the fi- the the it was said that the most of the house is already in the with in true fifty foot foot setback area. So um on your on your uh proposed one-story addition section
Mm-hmm.
on the right-hand side of it, you know, the line there, yes.
Yeah.
What is the footage that's being added uh from that point forward?
As far as this.
Front of the building, to the front of the building.
So i- it's thirty, it's twenty-eight feet.
That's the, so it's going twenty-eight feet from.
To here. And then another twenty-two feet from here to here. So I'm getting twenty-eight just because I'm subtracting. This is twenty-two.
So it's a substantial and for further intrusion into the setback area?
No, it it's, if I follow what you're saying, it's not substantial into it it's it's less non-conforming than was already existing. So as 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 Kathleen pointed out, there the the most non-conforming piece of the property is eighteen point five, if I could see that, eighteen point six.
Where is that? Can you point your pointer there?
I don't, I don't think you can see my screen, but uh.
Right, I see that.
Yeah, that's, I think Kathleen is doing that. So that's the most non-conforming part of the house. And as you can see, the the pro- the the structure of the house continues in a non-conforming manner. And then when you see the grayed out area where the proposed A D U is going to be, it's even further back into the setback.
Further away from the road.
Further away, correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? For the applicant? Is there any members from the public that want to be heard?
If there is, I ask you to use your raise hand function. I don't see any.
Okay. Um, any final um thoughts on this from the applicant?
Uh, no, I think the only other thing that I could add is that we've um already had the the health department come out, or the test holes have been dug. So everything is um aligned and and ready to go on that end of it. But um other than that, I I can't think of anything else that would be of you. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any final questions from the board? All right. So I I will, I think at this point, we'll close this portion of the hearing, and we will move to the deliberat- um the deliberation for both cases. So we'll start with the first case, the public hearing. I mean, the first um yeah, the first public hearing. This is the twenty-three bit uh Braylock Way uh with the file number fourteen thirty-two, ZBA two thousand and twenty-five oh two. There's any um comments from the board regarding this matter?
Margaret Lee, go ahead. Somebody else started.
Um, can I, can I just ask a quick question of Kathleen? Um, both of these cases were uh expansions of non-conforming uses. And at least in some of the other municipalities I work with, that that could be a potential issue. And I just didn't know from the Monroe Connecticut Code, I just don't know it well enough. Is there any issue with these two applicants being expansions of non-conforming uses?
From a use perspective, no, because it's still within the realm of a residential use. Um, so when we talk about intensification versus expansion of legal non-conforming uses as it relates to the actual use, um for twenty-four, I'll just talk about twenty-four Braylock, and then we can revisit again when we do the other one. For twenty-four Braylock, um, it's a sunroom and a deck which is in line with what you would have on a typical residential property. They're not in compliance with, you know, a portion of the um bulk standards, which is why they're here for a variance. But from a use perspective, it's an intensification of a use, a legal intensification. I wouldn't consider it to be a a legal expansion.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, Margaret Lee again. Um from what I understand, the ro- role of a zoning zoning board of appeals isn't to increase a non-conforming area. It's to um be sure that everything is still in alignment on the base of need. And in the case of um twenty-four Braylock, that need isn't to be what I want. It's supposed to be what actually pertains to the property itself. And I'm quoting, not to the applicant's particular um desires. We have to look at it dispassionately. I'm always concerned about the um creep that can come into a community by approval of something that seems very small. But if you approve something that's small, then what's who's going to define what small is? That becomes subjective. And uh, what looks like a little bit now could be a lot more as that could just become more and more and more. That isn't our role. We're supposed to be maintaining the regulations as they are. So that is my concern about both of these cases is that um it has to be on the basis of actual need. Certainly, um the expansion of the deck at Braylock is not a need, it's a want. And I think we need to take that into consideration. Someone else could come along and say that they want to put a piece of impermeable sliding down on a on a lawn. That piece of impermeable space could very well lead to water running sideways and harming a neighbor's house. How are we going to say they can't do that if we allow something it something else with the same amount of um increase? So uh, that is my feeling about that.
Well, if we use your theory, Margaret, I don't think we would ever approve anything to be improved.
Well, we, if you're looking at the way the regulations stipulate, we should be probably not proving some of the things we approve.
Well, because you have, I think you have a non-conforming you have a non-conforming property that they are just in um rebuilding, basically. And as part of the rebuild, they're adding a small space to it.
Uh huh. Where do you draw the line? It's supposed to be on the basis of real need, not, not a want.
Well, I don't know if we are supposed to define need or wants. I mean, I think we are here just to approve this applicant or, or not approve it based on what they presented.
Actually, when you look at the zoning regs, it, we are supposed to be paying attention to need versus want.
It, this conversation's in a lull, I'd like to interject. Okay, so I understand what Margaret's saying and we've encountered this previously several times in other cases. Basically, planning and zoning establishes the nature of what they want this town to look like and how it should behave and perform. And the role of the ZBA, as I understand it, is to take the situations that were unintended consequences. A general rule is set up. Somebody has a piece of property that gets damaged by the new rules. Uh, it's just completely not practical to follow the new rules. And what Margaret's defining and I agree with is uh, it, it's not the creeping part of it, it's the uh, the word, uh, the word is that we must have a uh, let's see, I apologize for wrestling with it. There must be a, an unintended consequence of the planning and zoning rules that prohibit the landowner from making practical use of his property. And in this particular case, uh, I can see where Margaret's going. It is, okay. This house has been here for a long, long time. It had a deck. Um, somebody would like a little more room. Uh, let's see if we can bend the regulations. But it's early.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's what they're asking.
Okay.
Because they're, they're, they're at they have a nonconforming property right now and they're just, my understanding is replacing what's there. And as part of the plan, it's slightly going over.
I'm sorry, go ahead, please Ben, I apologize.
Go ahead, Ron. You start it.
Okay, so uh, actually they're increasing the nonconformity. Technically.
Yes.
But I'm not so sure, it, it's a very, very small amount. Right? And uh, what I wrestle with here is what the mission of this board should be. And that is to address unfairness introduced by a general set of planning and zoning rules. Right? And creates a hardship where it is impossible to operate under those rules. Essentially, what Margaret's saying, and I think what I'm saying also is, this falls in the category of, yeah, I would like to have. But it does not fall in the category of well, I would like.
Basically, an essential accommodation, yeah.
That's, that's every case, that's, that's every, that's every case that's brought to our attention.
And I apologize, I'm going to interject for one moment. I see that Mary has her hand up. I just want to make it clear. We're in deliberations right now, which means that only the seated members of the zoning board of appeals can speak, deliberate and vote. Non-seated members cannot speak, members of the public cannot speak. So I just want, I'm not being rude by not admitting them into the meeting. We just legally cannot um, have any discussion outside of that group at this time. Apologies, continue.
Yes, I agree with Ron. It should, it, it needs to be an essential accommodation. Not a nice to have accommodation. And that was really what I was getting at and thank you for synopsizing it for me, Ron.
It's okay. It finally occurred to me what the words were. We have not demonstrated a hardship. Or that is, the question becomes, has a hardship been demonstrated?
Well, the hardship, the hardship was the hardship is a nonconforming property, right? So the question is are, um, we have a non, in both cases, actually, we have a nonconforming property. That is, they're looking to whether expand or replace what's there. And it's whether or not it's within you know, within reason.
In the case of Braylock, it's a nonconforming property, but it's adding to impervious space. That's a kind of a different argument to me than Elm Street. So I'm just sticking to this one. I see no need, I see no reason to expand impervious space because someone would like to add space to a deck. This is not an essential need, in my opinion.
Uh, Sarah, any comment?
Well, I follow that it's, it's not essential. Um, I just can't help but continue to come back to the spirit of the fifteen percent. And the fact that the house was, or the pool was built before the fifteen percent was put into place and now they're, they're not conforming anyways. And sure, if you have a chance, you should try to conform, but I think that there's some hardship in that alone, that the regulations changed after the work was done. And now we're looking at such a minor increase to a deck, not even a patio, or not even the, the foundation, but the deck. Which in the spirit of that fifteen percent is, does that impact the runoff of stormwater? And there's no comment from the town engineer on that. Or does it impact the overall aesthetic? Or, you know, do we find the properties are looking overly built upon? And I looked up the house and I don't, I, it looks to me in the spirit of the neighborhood, in the spirit of the home. I don't think that it has any negative impact on what was intended out of the fifteen percent regulation. So in my take, I think, I think there is a hardship established.
To me, this isn't a hardship. All they need, would need to do is simply adjust the size of the deck and then it would be conforming. And it would not increase the impervious space.
It would never be conforming. It's already nonconforming.
It's already nonconforming, but it doesn't add, but I don't feel that we should be adding to the nonconformance, given that there is no real hardship. The side, the building of the deck could be made somewhat smaller, narrower, and it wouldn't take up the same amount of extra space and that would be fine. This isn't, this isn't an, a, a, a leap of faith or an additional hardship. Nothing has, no, nothing has been changed on that deck. It's still standing. It needs to be replaced and I get that. But why not do it in a manner that doesn't add to impervious space? Which is what we as a, the zoning board of appeals needs to be looking at.
Yes, Kathleen, could I tap into your expertise, please? Um, at the time that the existing structure was built, once again, what was the regulation on impervious area?
It was fifteen percent of the building coverage. And when it changed, it changed to fifteen percent of the site coverage.
Okay, and it, and it is already at sixteen point eight percent?
Correct.
For the building coverage?
For building and site.
Building and site.
So in the regulations at the time that it was built, they're still in compliance. But they were able to increase their site coverage to any amount. There was no restriction, which is what the regulation is in an RF2 and an RF3 zone. Because you're on two acre, three acre lots, so you have more areas. So the town doesn't feel the need to restrict it. Um, the reason it's only site coverage in RF1 district because you're dealing with smaller lots, um, one acre lots. And you're also often dealing with preexisting nonconforming, like half acre lot, three quarter acre lots, which exist in town.
Okay, so at the time they purchased the property and built everything on the property, they would have had a reasonable expectation that they could expand in the future without limitation um, on decks, et cetera.
Yes.
That'd be a fair statement, correct? So after the change in regulations, their reasonable expectation got constrained. Fair to state it that way?
Uh, any property located within an RF1 district? Yes, is now then held to fifteen percent site coverage.
Okay.
When they're considering any improvements.
So the hardship in this case would be prior to the change in regulations, uh, what they're now asking to do would have been a reasonable expectation for the owner. And the regulations have now precluded that.
Yes, we are talking about like the, like, I think the pool was built in the nineties. Um, and the regulations changed, I believe in the early two thousands. So this isn't a recent change. This is, you know, from twenty years ago.
Okay, so if we put it that way, then we can demonstrate a hardship existing.
I could, don't quite follow. They didn't buy the property and use this current deck all these years with the expectation that someday they would expand it. This is recent because the deck is deteriorating. The two are, the two arguments don't, don't match. There, there's no hardship in conforming and having to build a deck that conforms with the current regulations. Because they've had that deck all for a very long time and it was never a problem. They didn't buy it with the expectation of being able to expand on it. If they had done that, you, they could possibly expand it to a ten foot wide deck, ten feet deeper. And why not put a roof over it? Uh, you know, you can't go down that road with that argument. You have to look at what is now. And the fact that this deck is simply being redone because it's in bad shape. And it is not a hardship for them to simply make it a bit smaller so that it conforms. And not take up more impervious space.
Uh, Brandon, any comment?
Um, yeah. For me, I, I, you know, one of the roles of the ZBA is to address potential unfairness. And you look at it on a case by case basis to determine what is fair and what might not be fair. And we just talked about, you know, I, I, I was kind of on the fence, but we were just talking about the reasonable expectation of expansion prior to a change in regulations. To me, that just signals a hardship. That in addition, there's, there's, at least from what I can tell, there's no issues with any aesthetical concerns. Um, it doesn't look like it's going to have a major impact on the neighborhood. Um, no impacts are shown from what I can see. So yeah, that's, those are my thoughts.
Um, and just for clarification, the pool was built in nineteen ninety nine.
Right, so.
So it was right before the change then?
I mean, it was, I, I don't remember the exact year that it changed. I know it changed in the two thousands, like it wasn't in the nineties. Um, so I can't give you the exact. I can't give you the exact date that the zoning regulations changed. Uh, but I, I can't tell you that they, they built the pool, um, in the nineties, in ninety nine, and I think the house in ninety eight.
Yeah, I mean, based on many prior cases that are, yeah, ma- many prior cases we've heard. There's clearly a hardship here. Margaret, you may not agree, but there is a hardship because of it's a, it's a nonconforming property and all they're doing is replacing an existing structure and replacing it with a similar structure that's slightly, very slightly larger. Now, I don't, I personally don't have a problem with it because it follows suit with many other similar cases we've had and we've had no problems with it. So.
Um, just one additional note, um, I, obviously don't, don't take this as legal advice, but um, from, from my experiences with, with a couple of other municipalities, generally there's an issue when um, you've kind of set precedent as a town and have done things a certain way. And then all of a suddenly for a different application where, you know, in the past you would have just accepted it if you you know, in this case, if you, if you were to deny, you could potentially set yourself up and sets us out, I should say, to, uh, potential legal challenges. So I'll, I'll just put that out there as well.
And regarding the hardship, um, one could technically say that had the regulation been changed before the pool was put in, that the applicant may have chosen a larger deck instead of the pool or a smaller pool with a larger deck. But because the regulations were put in, um, after the pool was already put in, they were, they're limited. And that in and of itself, to me, seems like an additional hardship.
I don't think that the zoning board of appeals should be considering what alternatives somebody might have done in the past. Given different circumstances, I think we need to be looking at what is going on now. Because if we keep approving, if we approve things that are not actually need, that do increase the nonconformity of the product, of the property. Then we could be set, go into legal challenges if we decide to deny something else that might be a larger problem. You know, we can't pick and choose our price points here. We are given what we're given. And to look way back to the nineteen nineties and say, well, they built a deck and, I don't think that's realistic. Um, we're dealing with what's going on right now. Um, it isn't a hardship for them to drop the deck width back by an inch and a half, as I think Kathleen has mentioned. And move on.
It's not an inch and a, it's not an inch and a half that would have to bring them to.
Oh, I thought that's what you said, I'm sorry.
They would have to reduce it by a hundred and forty square feet.
Yeah, but that's square footage. I'm talking about the, the depth from no, you're right. You're absolutely right. Yes.
No, she's.
But I just don't think we should start, uh, increasing nonconformity. When it's, when clearly this isn't a, a a case of hardship. Anyway, that's all I'm going to say about it.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve based on the hardship established and the minimal impact to any aesthetic or the spirit of the fifteen percent compliance being nonadhered to in this case.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who was that second?
Brendan.
Thank you.
All right, so we could formally vote. I will vote yes to approve.
Margaret Lee, no.
Ron?
Just trying to get the audio. Here we go. Um, Ron Stomack. Yes, approve.
Sarah? And Brandon? Sarah?
Yes, approve.
Oh, yes, Brandon is a yes, so that's
Yes.
Four votes for a yes and one no. So I believe under that, it's been approved.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, yeah. For the second case, um, six thirty one Elm Street. We can open the deliberations. Does someone want to start? Does someone want to start?
I'll, I can start. Um, I'm, I'm seeing the. It's a large increase in the, um, in the setbacks along with an added garage. Which in my opinion, looks to me like a linear two-family home. And the potential for a trend for two-family homes with multiple garages. And, you know, given that it's such a. It, it, to me, this, and I hear Margaret, you know, what's large and what's small, but this, this looks like a, a big increase to the setback. Um. And I think I, I just, I'm just concerned that having that second garage to me doesn't. You know, for. It looks to me more like an, an apartment for, for rent, um, in the long term. Maybe it may be needed for this household for the immediate time period. Um, but in the long term, it, it's just a potential for a very visual two-family home.
I will add just a little history to this where it is an apartment for rent. Our accessory dwelling units are promoting. Allowing people to do an accessory dwelling unit, which is a second apartment in order to diversify housing. In town so that we can allow people to age in place. Um, we can allow families to move in together and we can create more like one-bedroom opportunities for the community. So the garage is a requirement that they have to have. It can be in a garage or off-street or, um. Off-street parking somewhere else, but they have to require a separate, um, parking space for it. So we actually are encouraging what they're doing. Because we are, as part of our affordable housing plan, that's one of our goals and objectives. Into to increase the amount of accessory dwelling units in town. So I just want to make it clear when you say it looks like it's encouraging it. Actually, the town is encouraging it in order to meet with our state mandates of diversifying our housing and complying with our affordable housing.
A question here, this is a one acre lot. It seems to me that, and, uh, that that seems to be, uh. It's exploding the size of it more than it should on a one acre lot. Are they allowing a home to have accessory housing with an accessory garage? On that sized lot in an RF one?
Yes, it just has to be attached to the house. So we don't allow detached structures. We only allow accessory dwelling units that are attached to the main structure of the house.
Okay, all of this begs the fact then, as Sarah said, that it increases, it's, um. It, uh, really changes the setback. And that's something that I don't think we should really be wanting to do or decreases the setback. Uh, because that's such a precedent throughout the town.
Do we know how much square footage it's adding to the house?
Um, they can only have a maximum of a thousand square feet for the actual ADU. So I.
Can you explain that ADU? Is it, um?
Yeah, what does that mean?
Yeah, accessory dwelling unit. So that's what he was saying, he was trying, that's what, that's what, uh, board member Harris and I were just talking about. Is that he is creating a second apartment. He's creating what in the zoning regulations we define as an accessory dwelling unit. So he has to meet the accessory dwelling unit requirements and I don't see a square footage. On this. But I do believe that they are either at or close to the thousand square feet. So that's interior, not exterior. So it's not the footprint, it's the interior layout of the actual, um, structures. So it's an increase of more than a thousand square feet is basically what I'm getting, but I don't have their exact dimensions. You could look at their floor plans to get some of the dimensions related to it.
Kind of hard to do it.
And you hadn't, Kathleen, you had mentioned that they can't go behind the property. Um, this is like their only.
Think there were septic issues, weren't there?
There were septic issues.
Were there septic issues on that going behind the unit?
Yeah, they have to, they have to relocate and you can see on their drawings, they have to relocate the existing tank, um, as it is. Um, based on what they have, I can't speak to the health department on whether there is room in the back. And they still meet their separation distance from the leaching field, uh, to what they would propose as the unit. I also don't see their reserve area shown on here, so I'm not exactly quite sure where that is. So I don't know if they could go to the rear. Um, it looks like there may be some opportunities to do that. My understanding, based on initial conversations, is it's also just the layout of. They're tying into the mudroom that's existing there. They do need to have a parking space, so they already have an existing curb cut in that location. So they're utilizing the existing curb cut in that area, um, for the off-street parking area to get to that garage. Um, so I do think part of it is, um, I'm not going to speak on their behalf. But, um, I do know some of it's just logistics of being able to utilize the existing features of the property.
And you said they went through planning and zoning and.
They had initial, they had pre-applications come in. So they had pre-applications with staff in order to make sure that what they were proposing was meeting the accessory dwelling unit. Um, regulations, they have not gone through any of that permitting process because this is step one. Because if they can't get a variance, then, you know, nothing else really matters. We can't approve anything without the variance. But they had initial conversations with the town engineer, myself, um, and the health department.
Okay, so as far as you're concerned, that this pretty much meets the AD, ADU. Regulations that are in place.
Yes, and that is prompting part of the features that they're proposing is in order to meet those regulations.
So we're really more just addressing the setback issue.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not really happy about. Um, allowing greater intrusion and setbacks than we already have. I think we, if we're going to maintain the character of the town and do all of the things that we, uh, and, and, and keep everything. Sound in terms of, uh. Uh. Water movement and all kinds of other things. I can't even think right now. I'm, my brain's fried. Um. Then I, but I think we, we really need to stand firm on the setback issue because it's getting really, it can get really out of hand. And once you, once you start allowing more greater and greater setbacks, you really can't stop it. You've already made exceptions. You know, the town, the town zoning regulation might have just been thrown out the window because it has no effect if nobody's going to enforce it.
Does, I, I think we have this, in a way, we have a similar situation. We have a non-conforming property that they're just trying to, it's still non-conforming before and after. If anything, they're further back from the road than the initial structure.
Yeah, with granted.
If granted, yes.
Yes.
Um. You know, and then even if, so Kathleen, even if we approve this, they still have to go through. The other channels to get, you know, the building permits and planning and zoning and.
Yeah, it's administrative, but yes, they don't have to go in front of the commission. Um, because they're an attached structure, not a detached structure. Uh, but yes, they still have to get a certificate of zoning compliance from planning and zoning, a building permit. Um, and sign off by the health department and the town engineer Stormwater signs off under our certificate of zoning compliance. So that's part of that review.
Right. So with this, I think, um, as part of the hearing, um. Sounded like all the neighbors were in favor of it. I don't, I don't see any, anything that was submitted that was against it. Does it match the neighborhood? I guess that's the question. Is it, with this addition, would it? Fit right into the neighborhood or would it be something outside of the current structure? Or the current makeup of this, the neighborhood?
That, that immediate neighborhood doesn't necessarily have a defined, uh, uniform. Appearance.
True.
Yeah. Right, it, it's, it's somewhat eclectic.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. Therefore. Yeah, uh, that answers the question that you asked. Um. This one I think is a toughie. The, the original structure, when. When that house was originally built, it was fully in compliance with planning and zoning, correct?
Yes.
Um, there, and I see, if I remember correctly reading, there have been no variances granted for this property. Previously, correct?
Not that I'm aware of, that my records show. Um, that doesn't mean that there's an old one out there that, you know, isn't in my system. But yeah, from my initial records, no.
Okay. All right, thank you. You've answered the questions.
I ju- just have a, a question for clarification. Um, I understand that the, um, the agenda item says. It's regarding the front yard setback, but, um, with the proposed plans, are they in compliance with the side setback? Yes, okay, okay, because I just, I noted that Ben, you, you said the neighbors didn't respond. But the, but the home to the side is not, is currently vacant. But there is enough setback, they're within compliance to their setback from that neighbor.
Right, so, yeah. So it's really the front, the front area, whether or not. We allow the, uh, twenty-two feet or twenty-one feet instead of the fifty. And even if we allow it, they still have to go through the proper channels to get the approval and permits and. Health department to sign off and et cetera.
Yeah, they're sixty-four feet from the side yard property, uh, with the twenty-five foot requirement. So they're more than double the side yard setback.
Okay. Seems, and the same is true on the setback from, well, actually it's more than fifty feet of the setback from, um, Westman.
Yes, okay. And from the rear, I mean, they're over a hundred.
And from the rear, yeah, they're fine from the rear, yeah.
They're basically going, again, I think it's the same issue. You're, you have a non-conforming property to a non-conforming property. Um, and it meets the ADU standards and what the town is trying to do. Um, any other matters or any motions on the table?
Actually, I have a couple of comments, uh. Correct, the, the non-conformance does not increase. The degree of non-conformity or, or this request does not increase it. Um, so there's no further encroachment upon. Uh. The nearness to the street. The appearance of the structures as presented, uh. Have a fairly clean, good, good appearance. It, uh, it's not like, um, it's a hodgepodge arrangement. Now, and I understand that trying to move this back beyond the fifty-foot line. Uh, may actually detract from the appearance of the neighborhood. Uh, so I'm inclined to look at this one and go. We're not increasing the non-conformance, uh, the, it looks like it will be consistent in its. Attractiveness in the neighborhood. Um. I'm prepared to move to a vote if you are.
Yeah, is there a motion on the table?
I'll move to approve the variance as requested.
I'll second, Margaret Lee.
Okay. So we're, the, the motion is to approve. There's two motions to approve the. Uh, the plans with the setbacks of non-conformity to conformity. Uh, to not, non-conform, conforming property to allow this addition to be done. Um, under the ADU. And, um, based on the plans, it would fit into the current neighborhood. Do we have, um, so we're ready to move it to a vote? I vote to approve.
I vote to approve.
Sarah.
Sarah. I vote to approve.
Brandon?
Yes, I vote to approve.
Margaret?
I vote to approve.
Ron?
I vote to approve.
So the motion has been approved. With a vote of five to zero, unanimous. All right. So the agenda items remaining. We have minutes from April first. Is there a motion to approve? I was absent, so Ron, I believe, Ron, Sarah, Brandon. Margaret.
Yes, I was there, but, um, I don't think I saw the minutes.
It should have been in your packets.
It wasn't all the pieces of paper. I probably put it in something, someplace else.
I, I motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Minutes have been approved.
Oh, you still have to vote.
Oh, you still have to vote?
Yeah.
All right, so the vote is, I can't vote, I wasn't there.
All right, you can abstain.
I abstain from the vote. Ron?
I vote yes, except the minute says written.
Margaret?
I should probably abstain since I haven't read them, but I'll, I'll go ahead and approve them.
Okay, Brandon?
I approve the minutes as written.
Sarah?
I approve the minutes as written.
Okay, minutes have been approved, four to zero and one abstention. Um, as far as the election of officers, we're gonna table it for the next meeting.
Yes, we have to have all five seated members, uh, to be able to do that. Uh, we do have an application in already for the October second meeting. Um, so we will postpone that to the October second meeting.
Okay. And then the other one is, um.
So the next item is a request from me to approve Thomas Noonan, who is our current zoning enforcement officer. As clerk of the board during my maternity leave. I haven't seen you guys since April. I am pregnant.
Yay.
Congratulations.
Good for you, Kathleen. This is first?
My second.
Your second, oh, cool.
Congratulations.
Which means I'll be back because everyone's like, are you really coming back? I'm like, yes, it's my second.
Don't panic, I'll be there, yeah.
I know what I'm being for, I'm back. So I'll be out in November, December, um, and January. Uh, Thomas Noonan, who's our CEO, who handles so many people at the counter already. He handles all of our residential permits, so our certificate of zoning compliance, everything runs through him. I handle most of the commercial. He handles most of the residential, um, so he's actually even more aware of what our residential zoning regulations are. Than I am because his head's in it every single day. Um, so he is going to take zoning board of appeals while I'm out. So my request is to motion to make him clerk of the board so that he can act, um. As clerk of the board in compliance with the bylaws, um, while during my absence.
Great, awesome.
Kathleen, um, I, I had taken some of the online courses that I hadn't reported to you yet. Um, who should I report them to in your absence?
Um, you, well, report them to me now and then I'll have it. And then I'll be back in January. I have to write the letter, um, by March of every single year, just stating that we're in compliance. So, um, if for some reason my records don't show that somebody's up to date, I'll just check in with you before I, I write the letter and, um, we should be good.
Okay, I'll shoot that off to you, um, if not tonight, then tomorrow morning.
Right.
How often do we have to do that, Kathleen?
Every four years, um, so once you've done, and I, I, if you want me to, I keep a, I keep a spreadsheet of everybody.
I think I did it a couple of years ago.
Yeah, so once you are elected and you have, I believe, a year to do it. And then you have to do it every, uh, resounding four years after that.
Right, I think. I mean, if you wanna double check, but I thought I did it a couple of years.
I think everybody was good. It was more of the three new, well, now two is more of the two new seated members are the ones that had to get it up to date within a year of their appointments.
Okay, great, fantastic. Um, meeting, schedule for the meetings?
Wait, can I have a motion?
Oh.
To approve Thomas Noonan as clerk of the board?
I motion approve Thomas Noonan as the clerk of the board.
I'll second. Thank you. You could do this vocally if you wanted to. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Everybody against?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Wait, who said nay?
It was Margaret. I'm being silly, I should have shut them out. I'm sorry.
Any abstentions? Alright, so we're gonna say motion passes. Thank you very much.
Great.
Uh, we are trying to do housekeeping before I leave. So that
Two thousand and six, two thousand and twenty-six regular meeting. It's part of the packet. It's still the first Tuesday of every month. I guess November third is election day. The question is, do we keep that or do we move it? We could always move it later, I think.
Yeah, you could always have a special meeting if we needed to.
Is it possible, did we used to meet at seven thirty? Is it possible to move that again?
Um, let's, oh, cuz it's actually on the schedule what the time it is. Okay, let's combine this a little bit with the next one, too. We can talk about time and location. I have been approached by some people in town, some members of this board, whatnot. You are the only commission that has not gone back to in-person. So the question is, one, I guess, does the seven o'clock schedule work for you? I will tell you that the intent is that we are seven across the board, so like, everybody meets at seven. With that being said, it was not working for Inland Wetlands, and we were really struggling, because Inland Wetlands was having like five-hour-long meetings during public hearings.
Oh, my goodness.
Come in at seven, and we can't add agenda items after eleven without a vote, and people just didn't wanna do it. People were just shot at eleven o'clock. Um, so we didn't move their meeting schedule to six thirty, so we actually have moved one of the commissions to the six thirty time slot. I don't think it's what people wanted, but it's hard to keep, you guys all know, this is a volunteer position, so is Wetlands. Uh, we wanna keep our commissioners happy for them to keep coming, so we did move them to six thirty, so I think there's an option for it. We have an October meeting, so if this is something you want me to go back and discuss with people, we can do that. Um, so that would just be put out to everybody. What do you think about seven thirty? But then I would also ask you to put your input in on what do you think about coming back to in-person meetings.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so why don't we put both items for next meeting?
You wanna talk about
We're having, yeah, we'll have an October meeting, right?
Yeah, well, the question is, do you guys wanna entertain seven thirty? I mean
I prefer seven.
I prefer seven. But, yeah, I prefer seven, Margaret.
That's fine, if the group is fine with seven. It's, it's challenging for me, but I, I make it work, so no need to put it on the agenda next time.
Would it make, would it make it harder for you if we were to meet in person? Would that be an issue more than it is now?
I think the question was to Sarah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, for me personally, I do my best to make it to all meetings in person. I would definitely have more more likelihood of not being able to attend some meetings, but I mean, it's not an issue per se, but I, I might occasionally not make the meeting. But I'm not opposed to it if, if that's the other topic that the group wants to bring up.
Well, for electing officers, I think we should move this discussion for October.
Well, we have all the seated members. I think the question is, is this even something like, should we keep it on? Is there enough interest, or is this a resounding no, even from the people, you know, that are here?
About going in person, you mean?
Yeah, is anybody actually interested in going in person?
Well, there's certain times of the year, like February, March, and April, that are very tough for me. And, you know, doing it remotely would improve my chances of meeting versus in-person.
Well, so the way we schedule Wetlands and planning and zoning now is they're hybrid. So we, and town council usually has one town council member that's on Zoom, and then everybody else is in person. So it's not a in-person only. We could still notice it as a hybrid meeting, which means applicants or board members could attend hybrid, but the hope would be that the majority of the board would be in person.
Hybrid meaning, some people would still dial in.
Yeah, probably.
And the others would be on the, in-person?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't personally like the hybrid, cuz I think that's, that gets way too confusing. Very confusing.
Agreed.
It's either all online or all in-person, in my opinion. And we don't meet that often. I mean, we only meet maybe three, four times a year, tops.
Yeah. I think you guys met a little more last year, but yeah, this year, this is only our third, our third meeting. Okay, so it sounds like, yes, let's still bring it up to everybody, but sounds like let's still bring it up when we have all seated members here for the discussion.
Right.
But that it's, it's pretty split at the moment, if not leaning towards no, but we'll make that final decision at the next meeting. But that's, that helps me just to know kinda where you guys are leaning.
But as far as the regular meeting schedule, I think I'd be fine with that. Do we have to vote for that? We could do that now if you want.
Yeah, let's do that.
So it's the first Tuesday of every month, so you know, whether it's in person or, or online. That's when they've been all, you know, all these years, so nothing's changed on that front, so are we okay with approving the meeting dates?
Margaret Lee, yes.
I'll second.
Sarah Harris, yes. I mean a motion, sorry.
A motion to approve. I have a motion to approve the scheduled meetings for two thousand and twenty-six. And we have a second. And to vote?
Wait, who was the second?
Margaret was the second.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second it, yes.
I'll vote to approve Sarah Harris.
Ben Mayne approves it.
Brendan approves.
Margaret approves.
Ron approves.
Okay, motion passes.
Okey-dokey.
And I think that's it. The meeting's adjourned.
So adjourned at eight forty-nine.
Good job, everyone. Thank you for attending.
Thank you. Night, everybody.